Consolidated School District Board of Education. It is Monday, December seventeenth, 2018, and the time is six oh nine PM. Thank you, everyone, for being here, members of the board, administration, guests to our meeting this evening. Thank you, and we'll get started with Mrs. Hernandez. If you would conduct a roll call, please.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Montha Naylor?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Here.
And Mr. Flotus? Here. Thank you. I'd like to ask everybody to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and the New Mexico flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeasimple of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Again, thank you, everyone, for being here with us this evening. Next up on our agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes. We've got minutes to approve. A is November nineteenth, 2018, regular meeting, and B is November twenty-sixth, 2018, special meeting. Members of the board, you are provided a copy of the minutes in your board book. Does anybody have any edits or changes for those minutes presented? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Aye, so move.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration and approval of our agenda as presented. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion?
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on our agenda this evening? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. The next on our agenda is information and presentations. These are non-action items. And first up, we have Mr. Rusty Nations, the network specialist for the district, and the Cyber Patriots. I would like to, before I turn over the floor to Mr. Nations, I've got a little bit to read on the Cyber Patriots. The Cyber Patriots is the National Youth Cyber Education Program. At the center of the Cyber Patriots is the National Youth Cyber Defense Competition. The competition puts teams of high school and middle school students in the position of newly hired IT professionals tasked with managing the network of a small company. In the rounds of the competition, teams are tasked with finding cybersecurity vulnerabilities within a six-hour period. Teams compete for the top placement within their state and region, and top teams in the nation earn all expense-paid trips to Baltimore for the national finals competition, where they can earn national recognition and scholarship money. So with that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Nations for heading up this group of Cyber Patriots. And he has a few students here if you want to introduce them, and then we will recognize you all with some pins for the students.
Okay. Go ahead and stand up, guys. So for our middle school team, we actually have four members. Only one of them was able to make it tonight, so Tyler Peterson, he's actually returning from last year. Last year was our first year running the program. He's one of the two returning participants. So we have Tyler Peterson at the middle school. We have Trent Cole.
Bowl.
Bowl. I know I was going to mess it up. I didn't print it that way. I'm good with first names. Trent Bowl, he's one of the high school competitors. We have seven altogether. We have two teams. We also have Marcel Johnson and Allison Bates.
Barnes.
Barnes. I was going to look, see. So we have, for the competition, each team consists between two and five members. For the high school, we have seven this year, so we had to split it into two teams. We would like to thank our sponsors that helped pay the dues for the teams this year. Freeport-Mackay was one of them, Southwest Golden Joint, and also the Elks Lodge helped pay the dues for the teams. So last year, the kids actually paid out of pocket to compete. This year, we were able to get sponsors to cover the costs for those teams. So we want to give a special thanks to them for helping out and covering those kids. We've had two rounds of competition so far. In the first round, at the high school level, Team One placed sixth in the state out of 20 teams. Team Two placed fifth in the state. And it's kind of a two-part at the high school. They have a cybersecurity piece, and then they have a networking piece, which is a Cisco part. And in the Cisco piece, we scored, we placed third and fourth in the state out of 20 teams. That was round one. Round two, Team Two placed fifth again in the state. Team One placed eighth in the state. And for the Cisco piece, our Team One, it placed fourth in the state again. Team Two, they placed second in the state with 22.6 points, and the top scorer in the state for Cisco was 23 points. So they were right behind, right there at the, so we want to give special, these guys have done a great job. And we only meet once a week, so these kids have really taken it and gotten after it on their own.
Before we award pins, I just want to have just a little opportunity for comments and questions from the board, and that was one of my questions was, so it sounds like during the competitions, there's about 20 other schools around the state that are doing it?
Yes, in the state, for the high school, there's 20 teams. For the middle school, there's three. We're one of three teams in the middle school that are competing in the state of Mexico. In the nation, there's over 3,000 teams that compete in the program. The top 1% go to nationals, so you have to really score pretty high to get up there. But there are over 3,000 schools in the nation that compete.
The next thing I would like to say is, with our world ever moving towards kind of electronic and the electronic world itself kind of moving at a fast rate of speed, I think this is an excellent opportunity for the students to get that experience in these type of things that are, or this type of event that's different than other games that are out there. I'm trying to think of what is the game that everybody's playing now? Fortnite?
Fortnite.
Yes. So I see this as an excellent alternative to really a marketable skill because, as I know very well in our small business, that these professions are needed and they're valuable in really our electronic world. And so applaud you for leading our district and our students in these areas, and I think it could continue to grow into maybe potentially VOTEC-type experiences or courses within our district as well.
Yes, definitely. I think there's a future in that direction.
And before we, we've got pins, and we may have a few brownies back there to hand out as well that maybe left, but we'll do that. But before we do that, I'll open it up to comments from the rest of the board, and Mr. Brown.
I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this question, but Rusty, what got you wanting to do this? What spurred your wanting to do this in our district for our kids?
I've actually known about the competition for about five or six years, and we brought it up at that point, and there wasn't anybody who was willing to take it on at that time. Last year, we had a teacher at the high school approach us who wanted to, was interested in some kind of a program that was different than, you know, athletics and things like that, which obviously I'm a wrestling coach, I have nothing wrong with athletics. But, you know, and that's not for everybody. And so they wanted something that could be offered because they had a kid interested in computers. So I came forward and I said, well, how about you do this? And so she helped me with it last year and then decided it wasn't for her, but I didn't want the program to die after one year, so I went out and I recruited Ms. Amanda Peterson to help me run and facilitate the competition for this year, and we just want to keep it going. These kids deserve to have something different that they can still compete and they can still learn, and, you know, this is a future. Cybersecurity is a huge thing right now, and it continues to grow. As everything goes online, and, you know, I hear people come up to me, they're like, well, I don't do any banking online, but your bank is still online, and that's where your cybersecurity professionals come in. They got to be able to secure your information and make sure that stuff doesn't get into the wrong hands. So this is a growing field, and these kids, starting now, they have a future if they continue down that path.
I want to just thank you because working at a bank, cybersecurity is a big thing, and we just went through IT audit, and I guess with malware and all that that's coming through us as employees and our officers and staff have to really be careful what we open, and I feel this is a great, a good program because it teaches, because my kids know more than what I do. But, you know, not knowing what emails to not open and question, it could, that malware can really affect your system to get it back. We went through a test, and it's just what, the what-if is the question, and even a patch won't even really work. But I just want to commend you for keeping the program going. And Ms. Peterson, thank you, and thank you, guys, for showing interest in doing that because I feel this, in the IT world, it's going to grow and it'll get you somewhere. Good job.
I just want to say, congratulations. You guys are kind of going out on a limb, trying something new, and really kind of laying the groundwork, and you guys are just making yourselves marketable moving forward. So congratulations on that, and thank you, guys, for taking the time to do something like that and kind of basically set the precedence for new opportunity for all students. And thank you to you guys as instructors because it's time away from your families. Much appreciated.
Yeah, Rusty and Amanda, thank you for taking this on. Rusty, I know you do wrestling as well, and you're all over the place, but congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any comments?
I did have an opportunity to visit with these young ones at a practice that they were holding the other day, and I would like to thank Rusty and the men as well. Because it does take a lot of time, but I really am impressed with our students and you all, the time and effort that you're putting in. And the good thing is, you can feel good about what you're doing because you're going to be helping to protect people and organizations and big companies down the road. And you're, as Dr. Diaz said, you're making yourselves marketable, so you're going to have a very, very bright future standing in this program. And so it's a good thing. Have yourselves on the back. I'm very impressed, very proud of you all. You're welcome.
Thank you. Now we'll present a pen. We'll have the board members go down and present these pens and medals to the students and take a quick picture for members of the board. And Mr. Brown, if you want to join me.
It'd be mine.
Free advertising.
We'll take a quick picture. Come on up here. Scoot around, see if we can get everybody in a picture. Scoot on down, scoot on down.
What?
Want to move up here?
Yes, you do.
CP, make sure you put not pictured Rusty Nations in there. So that way. He marked.
There is some brownies in the back, so grab a brownie. Thank you, everyone, for joining us in that recognition. Next, under programs and presentations, we have Mr. Potts, the Director of Technology with Armory Reserve Building.
Is it okay if I do from here? So I put it up on the projector here, and this summer, we became aware that the Army Reserve Center, which is at the corner of Pine, Swan, and Silver Streets, that the Army is actually getting ready to release that property. And so it's going through all the process with the General Services Administration and the Department of Defense. And I started researching it and reached out to them. And so all of the green properties are district properties that belong to schools. The orange properties are administrative facilities, and the purple property is the Army Reserve. It's about five and a half acres. And after researching it, I found out that several other entities in town are also interested in the property, and there's a process to go through to get it, but we've been in contact with the General Services Administration. And one of the things we're looking at doing with it is this orange property that is right here, this small property right here, this is the district warehouse and technology department. And what we're looking to do is, the Army Reserve property has already a building on it with, it's large enough to host our department, as well as it has two training rooms, and then it also has a warehouse, which is a big thing that we use on our existing site. And so what we're looking at doing is, if it's available, we're looking at acquiring that property through the Department of Defense. And the way, there's a process and an application for it, but what it would allow us to do is move our technology center there, also have two training rooms, which will alleviate some stress on the central office, move the warehouse, and then because it is such a large facility, we would be able to put other things in the future there, such as maybe building a better warehouse for the district. The current warehouse, while it works well, it's hard for traffic to get in and out of, it makes it hard. And the way the process works is if the federal government and the Department of Defense decided to give it to us, we would have to occupy it for 30 years at no cost. And as long as we occupied it for 30 years and we used the whole facility for educational use, they would give it to us at the end of the 30-year lease. And so it would be a way to acquire, look at acquiring that property. There are some other entities that are involved, and there's a process to go through. But one thing that, one reason I believe this really benefits the district is, we've been looking for a technology training center anyway. It's also on a fiber loop we've been working on with the city, and we've been working with Western on as well. And so we think it's actually a facility that can fit out of the fifth of the region. And the nice thing about it is, with our plan, we can actually move in and occupy it with very little cost of the district. All we would have to do is, the district's existing fiber is all the red lines right there. And last year, through the legislation, legislators in New Mexico, we received money to start on a fiber ring to connect all these sites and make them more secure in case of an emergency. And this is what our fiber ring would look like when it's done, if we were able to acquire that facility. And we've already got two phases of this ring going in right now, and so it fits really well within that piece. And so Mr. Brown just asked that I let you know that we are looking into this as a possibility. It's one of the few large pieces of land up here by the rest of our schools, and so it would be a great addition to the district and for the region because we'd be able to do regional trainings and also offsite data backup for like Western and the Town of Silver City. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
Is there a price tag?
No price tag, except the initial price tag would be most likely, if it was deeded to us, would be to connect our fiber there. So to connect our fiber from Stout, which is where we would move it from, from Stout to there, would be about $20,000. And my budget has a fiber construction piece of about that every year. And so that would be something that we are kind of have to let you do for.
And the timeframe?
There's a lot of steps that it has to go through to get to us. In my last talks with the GSA, they believe that no other federal entities are interested in it currently. And so if it went through all the processes, they're hoping that it'll be released to the step we need sometime next year. And then, once that hits that step in the process, we have 30 days to submit an application to the Department of Education. And if the Department of Education likes our application, then they, and it was recommended, then it would be turned over that year.
And you mentioned there's other organizations within our area that are interested?
Yes, I've heard the Town of Silver City's interested in it as well. I've heard that El Rito is possibly interested in it as well, and maybe the county. So, and they're all on equal footing.
Surely, take a head no, so county's out.
Okay. That's what someone mentioned, so. But it's fairly equal footing for all of them, so it would depend on the application.
So let's say three of those three apply, then there would be a selection process based on application?
There's a selection process. If the selection process deems that, like, two applications are the same, then they could present that to see if one entity could buy it. One of the things we looked at doing was partnering possibly with, like, maybe the town. But when I was talking with the gentleman from the GSA, he said, actually, the way the deed works is that if it's emergency response, the whole five acres has to be emergency response. If it's education, the whole five acres has to be geared towards education. There's no sharing of that piece.
Other questions from the board? I think it's an excellent opportunity and worth spending some time, although I know dealing with the federal government, that can be a rather tedious and slow process. Santa Clara was, their armory was recently turned over as well, and maybe there's some contacts there that can provide some lessons.
We've worked with that, or like the Fort Bear going to the Forest Service as well. There's a couple of ones. Education is on the same footing with emergency response, so. And those are the two applications I've heard of so far that I'm looking.
Very well. Any comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Potts. Next on our agenda, under information and presentations, is the SCEA. Welcome.
Hello. I hope it snows, so we have a snow day tomorrow. Well, hello and happy holidays to everyone present. It's coming up very quick, Tuesday of next week, if you can imagine that. So, just some updates. Our SCA annual holiday party for our members went well. We hung out at the bowling alley, and it was great to see the kids and families bowl and have a good time. We were joined by NEA New Mexico Vice President Mary Par Sanchez, and also our Southwest Regional Representative Bethany Gerald. And so it was good to see them, you know, come out and support our small, one of our smaller locals throughout the state, and so it was good to see them. And, you know, we just look forward to more opportunities to hang out with our members as we continue growing and building. We know that April sounds very far away, but we know it's not, especially when it comes for our bargaining time. And in a discussion that we've had with Mr. Brown, we definitely like to begin, and letting you all know too, that we would like to start sooner than later because it just, it can take a while. And so we are thinking, hopefully, end of January, early February, to begin that process because it is a lot of time and a lot of, well, it's bargaining, so it's back and forth and things like that. So we look forward to that happening soon with Mr. Clough and the rest of the admin team. NEA Legislative Day is coming up here in a month or so in Santa Fe, and so members of our leadership team will be attending. It's a great opportunity for our team to receive professional development as we prepare to meet our new education-friendly legislators and our governor. We'll spend time there at the Roundhouse and meet with our local representatives, as well as some throughout the state, who NEA helped to get elected. And again, we're fortunate that this governorship coming up is going to be, and we all know they say, you know, what they say and what is done many times clash with each other, but we're encouraged because many of the people on the governor's team are pro-education, and they see the value in what teachers and support staff, ancillary staff, custodial maintenance, everybody, the gamut of education do for our students. And so we're really looking forward to being able to work closely with them. And I think that's about it that we have going on for now. You know, just the holiday rush, getting through these finals and exams and everything for everybody, and, you know, it's taxing at times, and it feels more like crowd control sometimes, but we will all get through it, so. Questions or concerns?
Questions?
All right. Thank you, guys. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Next on our agenda this evening is information to the board, and first up is Superintendent Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In visiting with Mr. President McMillan, we were looking at the joint powers agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Silver Consolidated Schools regarding the Ben Altamira's force complex. And we discovered that the agreement was dated back in 1999, January 11th, to be precise. And in that, the town responsibilities, and they've been pretty steady throughout the entire agreement, it appears, as well as the school district's responsibilities, the town responsibilities are the maintenance of the parking lots, which include labor, equipment, and materials. The monthly payments of water and electricity, electrical utility bills, those are responsibilities of the town. And for the school, it's maintenance of all four baseball parks and the two soccer fields, as well as maintenance of the concession stand, dugouts, and restrooms. And lastly, is the monthly payment of the phone utility bill, which includes the purchasing of all materials, labor, and equipment necessary for the maintenance of the complex. So the purpose was to define the rights and responsibilities of the parties as far as the maintenance and operation of the recreational complex. And it clearly stipulates that when some or all of the facilities on the recreational complex are needed for organized school activities by the district, these activities will take priority over use of the residential complex by the general public and the parties through their designated employees. And so clearly, if the district has any needs, that takes precedent over anything else. But that is not to say in any way, shape, or form that the community does not have access to those facilities because they do. So just wanted to briefly go over the JPA with everybody. Any questions? Any questions?
Questions from the board? And I thought it was just good to, I've never seen this before. I'd heard about it, but I wanted to bring it forward to the rest of the board just to review and put some eyes on it. It's been a long time since it's been, it hasn't been updated. And so mainly just to put it in front of us with our legislative requests, I thought it was important to know firsthand who was responsible for what at the complex. And you'll notice in there the term was initially for three years, but that it would automatically renew it for three more years until a party terminated. So it's still a good, valid agreement. Just wanted to bring it forth. Any questions or comments on that?
Well, I guess mine would only be that the parking lots are not in very good shape.
That's correct. And so we, there are some ideas that are being discussed. And one of them is, as you know, we've got a limited supply of funds, so we can fly towards that complex or anything else in the district for that matter. There is discussion currently going on about putting in some locker rooms in that area. And I can tell you, we did that in a stancia when I was there, and it made a world of difference. The teams were able to actually go to the locker rooms. And when I say locker rooms, I say it loosely because there aren't going to be any showering facilities. It just mainly be changing facilities. But it makes a difference for the teams to be able, including the visiting teams, to be able to meet there and actually have a place where they can change. And should the weather become inclement, they have a place to go to and things of that nature. And so it's really beneficial. And so there's currently discussion about something of that same type of nature taking place over here at the complex. And we're at the very beginning stages with that. Should that not come to pass for whatever reason, then we could look at the funds possibly going towards the parking lot.
Well, the city's supposed to do the parking lot.
Right. And that's something that we can work with the city on. And because we do, and working with Mr. Brown, the town manager, we have great working relationship with him. And it's something that every year we get something from the Department of Transportation where we have funds available to us that maybe we could help the town out of a need being.
Interesting. He's Mr. Brown, too. I didn't realize. I mean, I knew that until you say it like that.
And that's one of our legislative requests, too, is funding for the parking.
For the parking.
Yeah. And we had talked to Mr. Brown about that before we submitted that. And his idea was that we could look at doing something jointly, but depending on what would come about, hopefully they fund Scott, they fund ours. We can pull it together and look at doing both projects jointly and getting better bids. So that was all discussed before we submitted that one was in there.
There's a lot of dumping there. I don't know if anybody's been out there lately.
Oh, yeah. They're aware of it.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Do we have a fire?
Good save.
All right. Moving on to professional development.
Mr. President, members of the board and community members, we have professional development scheduled for January 7th and January 8th, 2019. On January 7th, it is going to be technology-related professional development being provided.
Mr. Brown, can you use your microphone?
It's on.
Now it's on. Good. And so the technology classes being offered, our breakout sessions came about as a result of a survey that was distributed among staff members as far as opportunities that they would like to attend. And Mr. Potts and his IT department have been very gracious in helping to coordinate and schedule these particular classes and breakout sessions. And we have teachers from various schools throughout the district that are also going to be actually leading some of these classes. And so I'll just read a very brief excerpt about that professional development on January 7th. And it is, given the results of the teacher's survey, Monday, January 7th, will be a technology-based professional development day. With the assistance of the technology department and fellow staff members, we have put together some mini sessions to provide the staff with some additional training on programs that are currently available. And they were to select four training opportunities for the day. And so we're real excited that it has become a district-wide initiative. And again, hats off to Mr. Potts and his department for facilitating and coordinating that. We greatly appreciate it. And then January 8th is going to be focusing on writing. And this came as a result of data from the park assessment itself. And we, in Contracting with Solution Tree, we have Dr. Angela Perry. And to read a little bit about her, Dr. Perry has over 30 years of experience in education. She has worked in the capacity of an administrator, graduate-level professor, instructional coach, and an English teacher at the middle school, high school, and college level. She has written and co-authored 11 books on how to improve instruction and literacy across the curriculum. We bring her to our district through Solution Tree Education to assist us in strengthening writing instruction for grades kindergarten through 12. We will hold a morning session, which will consist of the kindergarten teachers through sixth grade, and an afternoon session, which will be seventh through 12th grade teachers, where she will address the importance of writing in every classroom every day and teaching vocabulary effectively based on the three-tiered system. Our teachers will receive the resources of textbook, I'm sorry, a book called Blended Vocabulary for K-12 Classrooms, as well as Writing Matters in Every Classroom. These resources will provide strategies to help improve writing, no matter the subject being taught. And so we're very excited about the professional development opportunities that are coming to our staff. Questions or comments from the board? So this will be opportunities for, will it be primarily instructional staff or also administration is included as well?
Great question. It's going to be instructional staff, including the instructional aides that work directly with students in instructional capacity. And administrators, they're going to be going back and forth between this and some other professional development. But the main focus will be this for administrators as well.
Very well. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, under Mr. Brown, is the central office holiday schedule.
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the community, we would like to officially inform everybody that on December 21st, this coming Friday, the district will close at noon. And central office will be closed December 24th through January 3rd. For the winter break.
Questions from the board?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Very well. Next, under Mr. Brown, is approval of the Great Divide Windmill Project Financial Agreement with Grant County.
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the community, Mr. Flores and I were at a conference in Albuquerque, December 7th, if I recall correctly. And we were on a phone call with county manager Webb, as well as attorneys representing our district, as well as the county, and members of the company itself. And we have Mr. Rodney Gabbaldon that is waiting to share some information. I can give you his phone number, Mr. Potts, if that'll work, so that he can be available to answer any questions. It's 505-385-8541. So we can handle this in a manner similar to what we did in Cliff. Good afternoon, Mr. Gabbaldon. Can you hear me okay? This is Adi Brown.
Yes, Superintendent. Yes, I can hear you. It isn't a saying. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, sir. We can hear you. We can hear you pretty well. Can you hear me any better?
Oh, no. We just had an issue.
That's okay.
What was it? 91505?
Mr. Gabbaldon, this is Adi Brown again. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Superintendent. I'm sure of it.
Okay, thank you. We are at the portion of our agenda where we are about to discuss information to the board regarding approval of the Great Divide Windmill Project, the financial agreement with Grant County.
Yes.
If you would kind of explain the process and anything else that you feel relevant to this particular topic, and then be available for questions from the board, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir. Honorable board members and superintendents, members of the community, Rodney Gabbaldon, attorney of law, I think I spoke to him once in previous meetings about what we call the next statute annotated 4-694A that requires the county associated with the school district for what we call the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes or tax incentive to get this wind farm approved. So that does require a negotiation and approval by you, the Board of Education. And I believe the statute says it cannot be unraised without exception. So, you know, what lies in the face of that, and what is interesting is, you know, as you know, you're board members, the Board of Education cannot meet outside of a properly known as meeting. So what we did from the last meeting to this meeting is I consulted with your superintendent and one of your honorable board members. And we had a conference call with, you know, members of the county and their attorneys in order to discuss, you know, where we think everyone could end up regarding the payment in lieu of taxes of the tax incentive. And I will say that, as a person in 21 years of law practice, I've never seen a community come together so well. The total pilot is, as they're last debated, is 1,750 per megawatt. They say they plan on, and it's in your board resolution here, on producing about 250 megawatts. That's not guaranteed, but, you know, that's what they aim to do. For a total pilot of $437,500. Now, the part about the county has never seen a point so well. A tentative agreement, or what each side, and your superintendent and board member can tell you, is thought they could take that to their board with a straight down-the-middle 50/50 split. And so that is right in there. The payment in lieu of taxes would be divided 50/50 between the school board and the county. So that is a pretty well-negotiated, well-funded agreement. Each entity has their own uses for, you know, the money, which would be almost right in there, 218,750 piece. And I think that could, you know, your board members, if they, you know, maybe what the school's intentions are, that type of revenue coming in. So it is all laid out in this board resolution, which is possible for you, that you folks approve it. And I think Section 3, there says, you know, that it will be approved by you guys, the full board. And this is the next step that the county has been coming up saying. So that did get in a nutshell. It's a 50/50 split. It is a good deal for everyone. That's up to you. And here's the document in front of you, you know, with all of the legal requirements for you to adopt.
Questions from the board?
I just had a question. I know when we spoke out, when we were in Cliff, at the last meeting, we were asking, were these comparable rates coming from the company? Or was that, did we happen to look into that any further?
Yeah, I did look into that a little bit. And I did push back with the company, you know, as to what they want to do. And they had said that, you know, and I told you this before, you know, based on what they believed to be the terrain that they have to construct on, as well as the, and I'm not a scientist, but the wind rates or the rates of wind is that is as much as they were going to do. You know, the 1,750 per megawatt is, you know, about par with one other I've done and a little lower than another one I'm working on. But what they say is that, you know, because of the unique circumstances of Silver, that they were not willing to go anymore. So it is a little on the lower end, but, you know, they did provide that explanation of the terrain in the area, as well as what they realized out of the wind farm.
Okay. And then I know last time we spoke, it was projected construction was going to be started or completed by 2020? Which was that?
Right. So that, too, and good question, is a moving target, but that's about what they're thinking. And they did indicate to me that they want to take on it right away. So, you know, another one I've worked on, you know, a few years back, they did start right away, and it got done pretty quickly. So they're pretty serious. And the other thing, and I know you didn't ask this, but they did say that they do project it will be a 250-megawatt operation. However, you know, they can't guarantee that. That is not in stone, you know, based on the things that happen when you build a big park. But they are choosing for the 250-megawatt.
So, and then we can expect to see that 50% take, once they're up and functional? Like, do we wait a whole year and then receive it at the end of that year, a year from when they start becoming, you know, operational? Or when would we expect to start seeing that revenue?
I believe, and they, I'll be honest, they didn't send me the full contract. But on the one I've worked on before, it does start, you know, very, very soon after the bond is passed. But I will follow up and give the exact date of start. On the last year I worked on it, it does start immediately, not sooner. But let me not be out of term and get you that exact answer.
Yeah. And like I said before, I don't want to discourage them from being attracted to our area, but by the same token, they're already going to be reaping the benefits of the quote-unquote tax break, right? Immediately. So I guess my preference would be for it to start once they start to reap those benefits, but clearly.
Sure, sure. And it should. It very much should.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Gabbaldon, do you know how long these payments would be scheduled for?
I believe it's 30 years, is the number I heard. Ben Altman will be in the document to answer the last question. You know, the May document, but I believe it's over a 30-year period. I can get those two answers back to you, Superintendent.
And then the last question, in previous windmill projects that I've worked with you on, the company reimbursed the district and the county for attorney's fees associated with the entire project. Is that going to be the case here as well? Do you know?
I asked him that very question three days ago because in the last year that I worked on as an attorney, the company did pay the fees, and he recognized that. And so that is the, I'll just hand out a lot of answers tonight. That is the other one that he said, the company representative did say, the name was Mike, that he would get back to me on this to reimburse the attorney's fees for the district, you know, my fees. be able to renegotiate it. And at that time, we'd have some data, you know, to see whether we're generating, you know, could we up the ante and continue of that sort, you know? Well, you know, any agreement that expires, generally, you know, at that time, we'd be able to renegotiate it. And at that time, we'd have some data, you know, to see whether we're generating, you know, could we up the ante and continue of that sort, you know?
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
I think that's all the questions, Mr. Gabeldon, at this point.
Good luck to you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
That completes everything under Superintendent Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next up on our agenda is Mr. Clough, Associate Superintendent.
Mr. President, board members, administration, thank you for the time. Board requested two updates on our eighty-day count enrollment. You originally had the email that was sent out that we confirmed numbers. Since then, I've had Rebecca Lopez work on some charts for you. And I gave it to you, and we did our forty-day to eighty-day comparison for this year and our eighty-day to eighty-day from last year to this year. As you can see, district is down roughly about nineteen from forty to eighty day. And after last year, we're down about one hundred and sixteen students at the eighty-day count for last year. We are still in the verification phase of that. There are still some students we're chasing down, so that number could change. It will not be verified till early January from the State Department. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on the enrollment report? Will that information that the state, I guess, when they finalize, will that give us more information on where the students are located?
We can do what's called a W-check, President, which is a withdrawal check. It's not a win-check. We can check and see the codes that are used most often to see if they transfer district to district out of state, or if they're being, or if they transferred with no tracking code on it. So once all those numbers are back, Mrs. Lopez could run a report and we could see how we're losing our students through the most common withdrawal. Yes, that'd be possible.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I think that's been about the trend the last couple of years that I've been on the board is about a hundred per year, it seems like.
I asked Mrs. Lopez only to do one year because I didn't want to cry. We knew what was going on because we had the original council early in the year, so we just wanted to do a year to year and start from this point forward and see with the new initiatives we got going into districts, see how that might impact from this point forward. We can't change five years ago. If we want to change from this point forward, and we want to really get a true indicator of how we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, you asked for an update on the community dialogue. I sent out a PowerPoint that I gave at the Freeport-McMoran Community Partnership Meeting last week. That gives you a whole bunch of background information and next steps for the district. We had sixty-three people show up from twenty-eight different organizations, which pretty much doubled the entire first meeting. Not straight math, but it's close. And our goal is for the meeting in February is trying to get a hundred community members from different organizations as well as other entities from across the state that have shown an interest is coming in to show up at that next meeting. I've also provided you with a list of the organizations in Drake County that have participated. And we also added a new member as of Wednesday of last week. Silver City Green Chamber of Commerce wants to take part in it. We also have several other entities that have reached out. These are all the organizations that are taking part in the survey, attending a meeting, or we've had individual meetings with as we're going through here. It keeps growing and growing as we go through. A lot of positive comments. The district is in the phase right now, we're looking at creating a CTE Advisory Committee using business partners to help guide us in the direction we're going with our current technical education program, as well as pathway development partners. We're focusing on business, health occupations, and technology currently. We already have construction trades in place, so we're going to have Mr. Staley at the high school working on that diligently right now with his pre-engineering program as well. So this is going full forward. We actually have a district-wide committee of eighteen people as well that's helping advise us as we look internally at how we do our five through twelve career readiness component for our students. So there are a lot of moving parts. As my old history teacher used to say, there's moving parts in the cotton gin in this right now, but they're all coming together with some type of synergy with a lot of input from our community members on how to get those work-ready skills into our kids a lot earlier. So hopefully, by the February community dialogue and the March board meeting, we can lay out an action plan of how we're going to move forward with some of these things and have a clear direction of how we can provide these services for our students.
Questions from the board?
At one of our prior meetings, you mentioned you were going to meet with the Border Patrol. Did that ever happen?
Yes. They have not fully participated yet, but they are meeting with Mr. Coker, our principal. They are going to participate in our career day, but unfortunately, when we're holding our meetings on Wednesdays, it's Border Patrol Training Day. But they were willing to do it, so we're going to look with them. And I've been in contact with them quite regularly with them. They're actually going to be trying to bring up their training facility, their portable training facility to our career day this year that the high school's looking to hold in March or early April. So they've been a very good participant. They're actually wanting to come in and do one-on-one presentations with classes too, to show them the importance of what's going on with human trafficking, drugs in the area, and those types of things, as well as talk about career explorations. And we met with them, that had been late October. It's been that long ago. Wow. They came in November with their curriculum. We approved their curriculum, so starting in January, hopefully, they're coming into our history classes and like that, and giving presentations. They've actually dedicated a liaison to us, to work with us and to try to coordinate those meetings and be those types of things. They're working very closely with Mr. Coker and the guidance department over there to try to schedule those to come in.
And then my only other question was Western New Mexico University. How that's going?
We're getting there. We're having good discussions, but whenever you work with a large organization like that, as you can see, Western New Mexico sent four or five different departments to this. Mr. Coker, myself, and Mr. Thompson are going over to meet with the, directly with the Director of Admissions and ask them for some help in some given areas that we're looking at trying to do. One of them is a twenty-four hours liberal arts certificate that our kids can take strictly through dual enrollment and meet all their general education requirements in math, English, science, and math. That's been done with other, across other states in this country. We're going to check and see if Western New Mexico would be willing to do that for us. So any kid that takes that is transferable across the state to any state university. We've also talked to them about expanding our welding program and working with them on some others with our business entrepreneurship program. And because we work very closely with Small Business Development Center over there, they're willing to send speakers over. It's getting there, but anytime we work with a large organization, it takes a long time for you to get all the oars going in the right direction at times. There's a lot of, let's say, good dialogue going on right now and how we can improve it. It's just making sure that we are able to get that partnership going forward. But we've also had other institutions like Central New Mexico, Dona Anna, New Mexico State, all contact us about possibly partnering with them too. We'll provide whatever services needed for our kids. So we're looking at whatever option we need to, to make sure that our kids get what they need in dual enrollment.
What about cybersecurity?
Cybersecurity is one that is interesting because Central New Mexico actually has a program. That's why we, that's one of the reasons I had mentioned Rusty a long time ago, that there are some pathways out there. They actually have, I believe, Central New Mexico actually goes to Colorado State's program, if I remember correctly, because they gave a presentation last year at the Perkins on cybersecurity and all that stuff at the Perkins meeting last year for the state. So that's one that is on our shortlist, but I don't think our kids know a heck of a lot about. We've already got the piece with the middle school starting. So yeah, that's one that I know I've had some conversations with Rusty. It's just making sure we, how do we deliver it? Mostly it could be done online, but we just have to see how that can be handled logistically between us and the other institutions that have it.
If it was titled "The Fortnite Cybersecurity," you'd probably have...
We probably have three hundred and fifty students enrolled, even fourth graders that want to take it.
Other questions from the board?
I would just encourage us, if there's an avenue through Western New Mexico University to give them preference. I know sometimes it's hard to work, but it also helps us to enrich our community and keep people here in the community. And, I mean, when you look at a program like the cybersecurity where CNN already has an up and running program in Western, I can understand those areas for opportunity and growth, but I also just want us to try to work through Western New Mexico as much as we can, only because it's kind of like, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours, and it really ends up being community enrichment.
Yes. That is the total intent of this community dialogue process. They have them try to align. We've had very good conversations with Applied Technologies Department, and they do have some programs that have sunset that they could bring back, but they got to go through their process to do it. So those could be things that we address later on, three to five years down, once they do it. So Western New Mexico has the same problem we do, recruiting the instructors into right areas when you need it, because it's based on student demand over there more than what we have here. So.
Other questions or comments?
No, sir.
Nothing against boots-on-the-grounds security, Mr. Flores?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. I've heard good things from several different members of the community about these meetings, and so thank you for addressing this need in our community and our district.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda this evening is Mrs. McCain, the Director of Finance. Do you have anything for us at this time?
I just wanted to go over, we've been talking about the salary to, salaries to budget ratio since my budget presentation last year. And so I ran the numbers this month based on our year-to-date accumulations as of the end of November. And right now, we're at an eighty-eight point nine seven percent salary to budget ratio. And so it's looking a lot better than we thought it was going to look, you know, in forecasting it from last year, because I think we're looking at about ninety-one percent. And so, you know, we've been very cognizant of those numbers when, you know, we've been looking at staffing and trying to make sure that we're meeting kids' needs without, you know, having, being overstaffed. And I did give a handout to all of you up there.
That's his handout here?
Yes.
Very well, because I think in the past few years, we've been closer to ninety-two or...
It was over ninety-one percent looking at it last year, and the state average is somewhere between eighty-five and eighty-seven in that range, so.
Questions, comments from the board? Very well.
Thank you. We appreciate you doing that very much.
We'll look forward to hearing from you again later in the meeting. Next on our agenda this evening is Board of Education, and first up is the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Right. Patrick and I met with Michelle. Martha was out sick. Hopefully, she's feeling better.
Yes.
Last Wednesday, I believe. And we went over the reports, the one that she just mentioned to you with the eighty-eight point nine seven. We, I did the math, just because I like to do math. And if we add the budget, the projected cash carryover, once we have our audit approved, that's going to be closer to eighty-five percent, once we can budget, once we have budget authority over that nine hundred thousand cash carryover. So that's very encouraging. I mentioned, thank you, Michelle. We appreciate this. It's extra work for her, but very much needed, and we really appreciate your hard work at trying to make sure that this district stays financially solvent. We sure appreciate that. The next report that we went over is the variances. And as you'll see, for the 2018 encumbered through date, we're looking at a point six two percent of our budget. The state likes us to be at around four percent. And again, I ran the math. If you budget in that nine hundred thousand, again, just pending our approved audit, that's going to put us at four point six percent. So while this looks a little bit scary, we're just waiting on the state to approve our audit. Further, I would like to mention, you see red things on this. Red obviously means it would be what we would call an unfavorable variance. The main thing that I would like you to look at is on the salaries. We have an addition, it looks like we have an additional, additional hundred and twelve thousand in salaries. What in fact that is, is whenever we don't receive grants that we have received in the past, we have to move those salaries to operational funds. And so that's where, that's not actually additional salaries, but rather less funding from grants. Let's see. Credit cards look longer than usual. There's two months in there, just because last month we were shorthanded. Legal is now over a hundred thousand, so that's why we will be having an RFP. And a lot of our legal stuff that we're still dealing with goes back to many years prior. So we're trying to do all we can to recoup some of those legal costs, as we mentioned with the windmill. Hopefully, that can be covered through other means. We also have some other legal battles that we're hoping that maybe NIPSE will pick up some of the cost, and then we would be reimbursed. Those are all operational funds, obviously, affecting that bottom line. So a lot going on in the district. Everything costs money, but for the most part, I feel like we can rest pretty easy for this year. With the continuing, you know, hundred student loss, that translates into almost a million dollars. And so unfortunately, I think we will be having another discussion come budget time about where we can cut. And so that's just where we are. It's a shrinking district. So, thank you, Michelle, for all your work in the Finance Department.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything?
And just thank you for keeping our books good and healthy and keeping us on everything that we need on the board.
Cash carryover, is that typically the first of the year when we, when we see that come in?
It'll probably be about February when they actually, you know, once the audit has been released by the state auditor, and with the change in regime, you know, with the state, it might take a little bit longer this year because, you know, politics slows everything down.
That's something, it seems like I remember, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, it seemed like it, it was a little bit abnormal when we, when we received that. And I don't remember if it was early or if it was late, but it seems like it was...
I think it's been later. As time has gone on.
As time goes by. Other questions or comments from the board on the finance or for the Finance Committee?
Don't want your job? Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is the Threat Assessment Committee Report.
We didn't meet this month. We're going to meet again in January after the holiday.
Very well. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is Board Comments, and as Board President, I'll go first. I've got a couple, a couple of things that I want to just say is, the prospectors held their legislative forum. Thank you all for being present for that. As there is additional capital outlay monies that are available, and if we don't ask for it, we won't, we won't get it. I would encourage the other members of the board to visit with our local legislators and ask them to support our capital outlay requests. I think it's important that they hear from each of us individually before they get up to Santa Fe, because once they get to Santa Fe and the session starts mid-January, I want to say the fifteenth, but mid-January, once they get up there, it's, it's pretty crazy to, or it's pretty difficult. It's crazy up there and difficult to really get there here. So take this time now to try and visit with them individually if you can and ask them to support our requests. Also, this past Saturday, the State Land Commissioner-elect Stephanie Garcia-Richard was in town. I was able to meet briefly with her. And something that a lot of people may not know, the State Land Office was created to help fund public schools. And so I felt it was important to just be there to listen to what she had to say, and basically, she... And basically, she was saying thanks for supporting her in the election. She has a couple initiatives that she is pursuing to try and increase funding for public schools. So again, if we have the time as board members, members of the community, to reach out to the State Land Office and try and support them in any way we can to increase funding for our public schools, I would, I would encourage that. She also is a Silver High graduate. And I believe she said the first female to hold the office, or will be the first female, and the first educator to be in the office. So I think that's impressive as well. And it's always good to see Silver City peeps in those offices. Lastly, until I remember otherwise, I'd like to wish everybody a happy winter break, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. So thank you, and turn it over to Mrs. Montenegro.
Well, first, I just wanna apologize for my absence at the last meeting, especially with it being in Cliff. It's always nice to get a change of scene, so I was disappointed that I missed that. And I think it really gets old to say how fast time is flying. But we're never, I mean, we're always surprised, you know? It's like, here we are at the end of the semester. And it was really, really nice to have all of our administrators and coaches and instructional coaches and all that here earlier this evening for our, for our meeting. It's really nice, because I feel like a team when we're all here and working together. So I wanted to thank them for coming. And I've been in Jose Barrios mostly. That's the only place I have kids. I need to make my rounds to other schools, Mr. Coker said. But the overall feel, the overall morale, the overall, just tone, is different. And encouraging. And I know that that comes from everyone. It's administrators, it's staff, it's teachers, it's kids, it's parents. And I think that we're all becoming a team and we're realizing that we're all in this together, and we're all trying to make this bus go in the same direction. And so I just really appreciate that, and I'm honored to be a part of it. So thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January next year.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank Ms. Tammy Hooker Clifton, to speak, speaking out at our last meeting last month. That's what I can say, it's a solid, a solid example of a strong PAC committee. Their team came together and presented about them needing a security guard and et cetera, fencing. And we took action and heard them out. And I don't know if the position's been filled yet, but I know there was a vacancy. And they're getting a security guard out there. So I just wanted to thank her and her committee for standing out and speaking out, and for the students and for their school. We need a lot more PAC committees like that to come in and voice their thoughts and opinions to us. I'm very excited to be Santa Claus on Thursday, so I always love to just be around all the kids. And also, I just, you know, I just hope this 2019 brings good positive vibes for our district. I know social media and press, you know, we haven't made good news. But hopefully this year, I'm a very optimistic person and hope that Silver Schools makes a solid example for our community. And we are already. And I'm very, like Ashley said, I'm very proud and excited to represent such an honored district, especially for District One. Other than that, they choked up, just so much emotions behind that. I wanna just thank all the administrators, teachers, staff for hanging in there. And have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Practice your ho, ho, ho.
That was a good dinner this afternoon.
Very well, Dr. Diaz.
It's rare I don't have too much to say. I just wanna thank our educators for hanging in there. If there are any other students who are like my kids, they were ready to be on break since Thanksgiving and just carry that on through to the new year. So thank you for hanging in there and continuing to force-feed them some education. I think it's been a really positive year. We've seen some turnaround. We're, you know, looking at everything from our bottom line to our staffing, to the quality of education we're providing. And I think, you know, there's more to come with that as we meet as a board, to also work on those goals, so that we're all on the same page, working together and collaborating. And I just wanna say thank you to everybody that's been a part of that. It does feel like a much more positive vibe. And I think our educators are feeling that support as well, and so that's much, much appreciated. And I would also say that I think on every level, what I'm hearing from students and educators is that they're feeling like their feedback is heard. And the survey is a perfect example with professional development up and coming, so hats off to you, Mr. Brown. But I think it's a continual work in progress, and so I want us to continue to work in that direction. And just happy holidays to everyone. Here's to starting a really positive new year. And I think it's every time, I've only been able to say Happy New Year once up here so far. So second time around, it feels like it's just, it's more and more positive as we get going. So thank you, you guys. And I also wanted to just say thank you to the administrators that showed up tonight. I know you guys put in some long, long hours as educators and administrators. So thank you for coming and adding another meeting to your agendas. And to the Cyber Patriot students, that was really, really, really neat, really neat. And outside the box compared to what we're used to hearing about, which was really nice. So I wanted to thank them. And also, the Altus Energy Services Company that's working on this windmill project. I mean, the reality is, it's revenue for us that's much needed in public, public education. And the fact that they're willing to come entertain, you know, providing some economic development to this area is just, it's great. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I didn't have much to say, remember.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Mr. President, Patrick and everybody touched on our last board meeting in Cliff. And before I start, I'd like to say thank you to all the decorations and decorating the room. It looks really nice, Linda, whoever did it. I appreciate that. But something that troubles me, and then I think it should be on record, but there was a situation last, last month in Cliff with, besides Ms. Clifton that spoke up. And I'll update you on that shortly, Board, about the security guard. But more importantly, there was a member of the public that brought forth some complaints and allegations about Mr. Yersik and Jose Barrios. And, you know, at that time, no names were used. And, you know, afterwards, the Silver City Daily Press reached out to this person and got their story. And I think it's important that we add that we, we as a board, and Mr. Brown, Mr. Yersik, and that member, had a meeting here at the central office. We discussed the allegations. And without going into details of that meeting, everything was strung out, and some apologies were made towards Mr. Yersik and the district. And some, some very ridiculous and disturbing allegations were made with no proof. And what that leads me to is that, you know, the Daily Press, I think, uses these headlines to sell papers. And that becomes disheartening to the district and damaging to the district, because there's two sides to every story. And Mr. Yersik's side was not reached out, or as far as he knows, he told me no one reached out for his comment. But the article that came out obviously used his name. And I think, in my opinion, was very slanderous. It was very damaging to him and very hurtful, because the allegations were not true. And that's what came out in the meeting. And I think in reading the headlines, and, 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 and I think before that, or maybe on the same page, or something very close similar, there was another headline. And the title was on the front page, "Another Silver High student, Silver High teacher is accused of a sexually assault crime," or something to that effect. So these, these articles, I think, are, is not credible journalism. And it does damage our district, because we are in a business of attracting potential families and students to our district. And when they read those articles, it sends a negative image about our district, which in fact, it's more positive than it is negative. And as everybody has attested here, we are moving forward. And there's two sides to every story. And like I said, I think as a, as a board, and I said this in the meeting, as board members, we are here to speak up for our constituents. But at the same time, we're here to defend our staff and faculty, and our, everybody that works underneath us or for us. And in this case, I think I, along with the board, are standing up for Mr. Yersik. And that that was a slanderous story. And I hope, I hope this is printed in the newspaper, so that Mr. Yersik and the other administrators can know that we as a board are here for them, because they are doing extra work outside their duty, and it is appreciated by us, because it's hard to do that, their job. With regards to the Cliff Security Guard, it was brought up that they don't have security in Cliff. We responded in a timely manner. We approved that position. And this afternoon, I was on the committee to interview applicants for that position. Mr. Thompson will forward the name of the applicant that's gonna be offered the job to Mr. Brown probably tomorrow. And we hope to have that person on board probably by the end of the month. So we're not waiting, we're not having another meeting. We didn't have another committee. We moved and made, made a security guard happen for Cliff. I would just like to end with a positive comment, that I attended the State Board, the State, the School Board State Meeting in Albuquerque on December seventh and eighth. And it's a very positive feeling in Santa Fe with the surplus funding that we're having. Senator, I think, Mimi Clark was there, one of the guest speakers. And she did indicate that the money's there, they may be reoccurring for a year or two. She's very positive about the money. They're very positive about the new administration that's coming on board, because they are pro, pro-education. So just very positive. I would hope that the new administration can, can deal with some issues with students, with teachers earning, for example, teachers earning vacation leave or annual leave. However, if they take it, they get penalized. I think that's counterproductive and it's, it's not fair. And I think maybe that's one of the issues that Santa Fe can deal with, and know that we have to appreciate the educators and administrators we have, and fix things like that. Again, it's very positive out there. I was happy to be up there. I talked to, got to meet a lot of people with Mr. Brown. He attended with me as well. And lastly, lastly, I got to meet the HEMAS Superintendent, Mr. Brown, Susan. And we had a nice little conversation. And when we explained how we do things here, she very much wishes, very much wishes, that her board would start their meeting with a meal, as we do. Because she said it just changes the whole mood of the meeting, and makes it more productive and a more, I guess, fellowship type of meeting. When I told her that we did it, she was just, I think, a little envious. But maybe she could take it back to her board and do that. But thank you for sending me. And thank you, Linda, for the decorations.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to add that, yes, thanks to the Culinary Arts Program at the high school. Thanks to Mrs. Flores for preparing all these treats and these, this food for the board every meeting. I think that's gone over well. Mr. Flores, I do share some of your frustrations from time to time with the reporting in the Daily Press. But I think a good example was after our last meeting, there were some things that were brought to the board's attention. And then they were addressed the following meeting. So I think that's, that's good. The board is listening, the board is responding and taking action, whether it was the concerns of the security, the concerns that, that were made during the open public comments. Those, those were addressed, meetings were held, and, and the board took some action, and administration took some action. So there is good work being done by the board, and there's good work done out in the district, so. Mr. Brown, you have any, any other comments? Members of the board, any other comments to follow up before we move on in our agenda?
Eddie, Eddie's, it was well said. Thank you.
No, sir.
Not at this time.
Very well, we'll move on in our agenda. Next up is Open Public Comments. And we do have one request from Mr. Wayne Sherwood. If there are others that would like to present to the board in Open Public Comments, please fill out a request form and give it to Mrs. Hernandez.
All right, thank you. Mr. President and Board, Superintendent Brown and staff, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Wayne Sherwood. I'm the Director of Aldo Leopold Charter School. And some interesting things going on today. You know, first, I'd like to, let's just make clear, I didn't steal any of your students. Between our fortieth and eighty day, we actually lost twenty students also. So, and I don't know where all the students are going, but when, when we do lose students, some of them do come to Silver, some go to Cobry, and I don't know where they're going. But leaving the community, I guess. And, and also, just to make it clear, our school doesn't allow any new students throughout the school year. So the only time we get students is during the lottery, and that is in August of that year. So I, I just thought, I wanted to bring that up, because we were talking about numbers and where kids are going. We have the same, we have the same issue going on. I'm sure Cobry does too. And I think it's just a Grant County issue. But the main reason I'm here tonight is because you're gonna consider the resolution to approve the wind energy project in Southern Grant County. Your approval is necessary, because state law requires school districts to give their approval to electric power generating projects to take advantage of industrial revenue bonds, as this one. In exchange for their approval, it is assumed that the school districts will receive some portion of the payments in lieu of property tax that get negotiated with the project developer, as we heard from the attorney earlier. The law was passed in nineteen eighty-five. By the way, that was twenty years before the first charter school in New Mexico. So as a result, it refers to only school districts. Now, as my school, I'm considered a school district also, but I'm, because I'm a state-chartered school. And as the bodies must approve, a district must approve each project. But the law's intent was clearly to provide, to, a benefit for public school students that makes up for the fact that the IRB, the Industrial Revolution, revenue bonds are exempt from the property tax of the sports local school boards. So assuming the project goes forward, as we heard from the attorney, it's gonna be between two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the district. I would like to request that you designate an appropriate share of this revenue to Aldo Leopold Charter School, just as currently as what happens with SB nine and HB thirty-three money. There is nothing that requires you to do so, but there is also nothing that prevents you from including such language in your resolution. Doing, doing so would be consistent with the spirit of the state's IRB statutes, and with the commitment I know all of us in this room feel to provide, is the best possible education for all the students and families residing in the district. So please consider that when you're thinking of, when you're gonna pass this resolution of including Aldo Leopold. We do share students, we do share a lot of our similar resources. A lot of our athletes come over here and they participate in the school district. And I think we're developing more of a relationship now, as, as things go on. Like, I know, like our VOTEC right now, we wrote a grant just recently. The PED had a grant for basically like an internship coordinator. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. That's something Aldo does, is on Fridays, our high school kids have an internship, or they do YCC. That's something Aldo does is on Fridays, our high school kids, uh, have an internship or they do YCC. And we wrote this grant because it cost us about $60,000, $60,000 to $80,000 for this person. And the, the state said, "No, we can't give you this grant because you already have an internship coordinator." But they said, "Well, we would like you to do, we'd like you to be the outreach school for your region." So now we are going to receive this grant. And I say about 90% sure we're going to receive this grant. And we're going to be the outreach school for, uh, and we're going to be working with Silver, Cobry, all the way down to Lordsburg Dimming, uh, the whole area. Because what the state would like to see happening is what we're doing already at Aldo Leopold is having our Fridays and having these internship coordinators, uh, our students go. And let me explain what they do. They go work, uh, if you're in an internship, you go work at, uh, at an office and you learn a skill. So you get ready for life. So you, you're actually going to work. You don't get paid. This is a non-paid job. But we also write a grant for YCC every year. And we just received our grant for, I think, $180,000 and that includes both semesters. Uh, our students go work for nine, uh, or eight hours every Friday. And they get paid, uh, pretty good money, like starting at $9 an hour. And they work a couple of weeks, even during the summer, we have, uh, YCC projects. And New Mexico PED would like to see us do an outreach program that would incorporate all of our schools in this area. And I'm really excited about that. And now this, like Silver Schools, now they would write a grant and they would get an internship coordinator with this, with this funding. And we would be kind of like this, uh, the school to help you get your program started. And that's what we're excited about is being able to help all of our schools in the community and see if we can, uh, I, I believe in the VOTEC. I think that's what we need to do. I think that's where the direction we're all going. I, I hear that earlier, uh, tonight. And, uh, that's something that Aldo really focuses a lot of their attention on also. So I hope you'll consider this too. Uh, for us, if I was just to look at all of our students were, were, are within the Silver District, because we do have some kids from Cobry District also, it's not all just Silver. Uh, it would probably be about 150 students, uh, just in the Silver District. And the rest, we have about 170 right now, so about 20 come from the Cobry District. So if you broke that down, uh, dollar-wise, how much would that be? I'll let the mathematicians figure that out, Ashley. You could, you could figure out how much that'd be, but it'd probably be between $10,000 and $20,000 a year that we could, uh, we would be getting from this. Okay, any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mind if I have a brownie?
No, help yourself.
Yeah, that's right.
Up next, uh, this evening on our agenda is consent agenda, um, budget finance and purchasing. A, the financial reports, B, budget adjustment requests, C, award of bids and proposals, D, donations, and E, conflict of interest disclosures. Mrs. McCain, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay, uh, starting with, um, A1, the total amount of checks written for the month of November. Um, I would like approval for, um, checks written in the amount of $2,709,508.80. Um, then, um, I also, um, B, under our budget adjustment request, we have, um, or, we had a letter from the, the, uh, Public Ed Department on the K-3 Plus program that we had at Stout this summer. Um, it was kind of a new experience for, for the administration there in writing the grant and then trying to get the students that came in. We anticipated initially when they wrote the grant of 110 students. It ended up being 61 students. And the funding is based on the number of students that you get. So they initially awarded us $132,000 based on the projected 110 students. Um, that didn't come to fruition, so we ended up with the 61 students. So what they've asked us to do is reduce that budget that they allotted us by $60,000, which is their calculation of, of that portion that didn't, you know, the students that we didn't get. And so the program is over. We've already, um, spent every, you know, the monies that, you know, were allotted to us. Um, we actually had a little bit of an over expenditure because, um, the final budget ended up being, um, I believe, $78,000 and change. And we had spent $83,000 with supplies and, and, and different things that went on. And so we would be, um, returning $4,500 back to the state of New Mexico because they can only fund us for as many students as we have. And with those project, those summer, um, school thing, um, programs, it's hard to make parents understand that when they come out and we ask you for a commitment for your child to come, that it's not a, "Oh, well, if you don't want to do something else later," and, and they, they pull them from the program. Because they look at the final number. You know, we may start out with, you know, 80, 80 or 90 kids, but the final number at the end of the program is what we're going to be finally funded on. And so we had some of those that, you know, didn't kind of follow through with keeping their kids in the program. And so that's why we had to, we're doing a reduction in the budget for that program. And then, um, the next thing, uh, letter C on here is, uh, awards of bids and proposals. We went out for RFP on our legals because we obviously were going over the $60,000, um, limit that is set by the state. And so we had two respondents to our, um, RFP. We had Walsh, Gallegos, which is our current attorneys, and, um, Cuddy and McCarthy, who were our previous attorneys. And, um, we had a committee that, um, looked at the RFPs. And of course, an RFP, when you go out for, um, request for proposal, you're not looking at just the dollar value of something. You're looking at the, um, much more than that. You know, what they can do for you beyond, you know, the, the dollars and cents that, you know, you would use a bid for. And, um, Walsh, Gallegos was the, the respondent, um, not bidder, but they, they are the ones that we chose in the RFP for, um, to continue using as our legal services this year. Um, we'll probably have to continue if our legal trend continues as it is, go out for RFP each year. Um, we do have the option to go, you know, to keep them for more than one year if that's something that we so, you know, that we deem necessary. Rather than having to go out for RFP every year, I think we can go up to four years maintaining them as the legal counsel based on the current RFP. And next, donations. Um, the Town and Country Garden Club, um, was, um, most generously sent a donation to, um, us for the Silver High Band for $1,000. Um, they have been really great at supporting our band each year. We've had, you know, comparable donations to them. And so we'd like to really thank them for their continuing support of our, our band, which sometimes with athletics and other activities kind of gets overlooked. So yay for them for supporting the band. And then finally, um, conflict of interest disclosures. The only one that we have, um, is we had to have one signed by, um, Mr. McMillan because, um, we, uh, contract with Southwest Bonin Joint for our athletic training, trainers, um, for our, um, sports. And so he just has, um, signed a disclosure saying that he's not receiving any fair, unfair advantage for providing us with that service. All of these things, I ask you for your approval to, tonight.
Questions from the board to, for Mrs. McCain?
I just wanted to know if those adjustments are reflected in the numbers that we got from the budget report?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not operational, right?
No, it's a separate grant.
Yeah.
I would just like to add on regarding the, uh, my, uh, conflict of interest disclosure. That's an annual disclosure. The amount encumbered, I believe, is 20,000 or 25,000 to the district. Um, probably, and I'll, I'll say probably in another year or two, I'm probably looking at stopping that aspect of my work at Southwest Bonin Joint. So, if the board could look at, so that's $25,000 that's encumbered. If the board could add in another $25,000, they could hire someone full-time to be there for every practice, every game, travel, et cetera. So, um, just something to, to throw out there and think about, uh, although with declining enrollment, uh, I understand the financial bind, but just wanted to throw that out there as well. Other comments, questions for Mrs. McCain? Very well, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item, uh, 1A, financial reports, B, budget adjustment requests, C, awards of bids and proposals, D, donations, and E, conflict of interest disclosures.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Thank you, Mrs. McCain, for your work on these reports, month in and month out. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next on our, uh, action items is item 2, transportation. And I believe the only item under transportation is, that, uh, C, feeder routes?
Correct.
That we are, um, looking at approving this evening. Mr. Clough, do you have information on that?
The only information is that their transportation in lieu because of buses. Because there are some areas that we, the parents choose instead of us going out, it's more costly for us. So Sanders asking that these four, uh, parents be reimbursed in lieu of us sending buses to God knows where.
Very well, any questions from the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve action item 2, transportation, item C, uh, the feeder routes. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any additional discussion?
We're not going to tell.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Uh, next, under our action items this evening is item B, consideration and approval of the Great Divide Windmill Project Financial Agreement with Grant County. And Mr. Brown, do you have any more information on that?
Not specific information, Mr. President, members of the board and community. But I, I thank God literally for this opportunity for our district. It's going to, needless to say, help, help in many, many regards. And I'm grateful to the county for working with us and to the company itself for, for considering this area and this community to host your, your project. We're very appreciative.
Questions or comments, uh, from the board on, for Mr. Brown? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, B, the consideration and approval of the Great Divide Windmill Project Financial Agreement with Grant County.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? I would also like to thank, uh, Grant County for working with us on this, this project. Uh, the money is, uh, greatly needed in our district, especially with our declining enrollment year after year. Um, so I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for our district to, uh, and our students. Seeing no other discussion, I'll, uh, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda this evening is, uh, future meetings and proposed agenda items. Uh, next, uh, scheduled work session and regular board meeting is January 21st, 2019.
It's not Martin Luther King Day.
And I believe so, which, and we're in, we're in school that.
We are in school.
That day, correct?
Yes, sir, we are.
Yes. So is every, is the rest of the board, that is, uh, Martin Luther King Day. Are we okay with meeting on that, that Monday? Is anybody okay with that? That's our next work session and regular meeting. Uh, the next item, uh, future meeting is a board member institute, February 21st through the 23rd. That's in Santa Fe during the legislative session. Then there's the School Law Conference, which is in June of 2019 in Albuquerque. And the Leadership Retreat, uh, for the New Mexico School Board Association is July in Río Negro. That's everything on that aspect for future meetings and proposed agenda items. Next, we have open public comment. Mrs. Hernandez, do you have any other requests? Very well, thank you. Um, next is, uh, executive session. And the board may elect to go into executive session for reasons permitted in the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, NMSA 1978, 10-15-1H, 1 through 9. A, limited personnel matters as permitted under section 10-15-1H2, specifically for the superintendent to update the board and legal counsel to advise regarding the investigations of certified and classified employees, remedial compensatory efforts related to the same and specific employee movements. And 2, specifically for legal counsel to inform and advise the board regarding, uh, Board of Education versus Chavez. So, Mr. Brown, I do believe we need to go to executive session.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Hernandez, I believe we need to have a roll call to go to executive?
Yes. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
And Mr. Flores?
Yes. Thank you. The time is 7:55. We'll go to, into executive session. Um, is the conference room available?
Yes, sir, it is.
We'll meet in the conference room in a few minutes.